All right, it is 6:00 PM. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call please. Start here. Justice person?
Here.
Delaware?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Mayor Beth? Here. For the committee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, acknowledgement of the opening exact poster. Let's apply the sound and trips.
The next one before you move to adopt the agenda, I'd recommend that you mention in your motion that, uh, item number one F will be heard at the time declared by the mayor because we're still waiting for one person to appear. So, say a motion with one F at the mayor's discretion.
That you did.
Uh, I move to accept the consent agenda with the exception of one F, which will be heard at the mayor's discretion.
Sorry.
All right, call for a vote. Uh, motion carry, four to zero. All right, we're called consent agenda items.
So you just did?
That's what we just did, didn't it?
No, we did adoption of agenda items. Yeah.
I said a consent agenda, sorry.
We know your intent.
Okay. So now I approve, uh, I move to approve the consent agenda.
There you go.
Call for a vote. Motion carry, four to zero. All right, let's jump down to twenty-five, twenty-six water and sewer rates. Three-day public hearing. Water sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. We'll go ahead and open that at six-oh-two. And want to talk about water and sewer rates. Nothing? Oh my goodness gracious. Okay, you can close it at six-oh-three. Let's go ahead and close it at six-oh-three. Three B consideration of first reading ordinance twenty-five fourteen.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five fourteen.
Sorry.
Ordinance twenty-five fourteen and ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, pending Title V, Chapter fifty-one, Section fifty-one point oh-nine of the Waverly Municipal Code, water rates.
Uh, discussion. So this represents a seven percent increase, which is according to the rate setting that JEO did for us a couple of years ago. All right. Call for a vote, there's no discussion. Motion carry, four to zero. Consideration of first reading of ordinance twenty-five fifteen.
I move to approve first reading of ordinance twenty-five fifteen.
Sorry.
Ordinance twenty-five fifteen and ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, pending Title V, Chapter fifty-two, Section fifty-two point three-nine of the Waverly Municipal Code. Sewer base rates in Section fifty-two forty, sewer surcharge rates.
Discussion.
This is kind of what JEO recommended.
This was a two percent increase, yeah.
Right.
According to the JEO. Last year, we did not raise this up. So this is a two percent. Okay, call for a vote if there's any discussion. Motion carry, four to zero. All right, Sheriff's report. Oh.
You're with us tonight?
Sorry, I missed last meeting. You know, he was a, you know, solving crime like this.
You watching DC?
Hell, my alarm didn't go off, actually. No, just kidding. Uh, the weather's been great. I'm, uh, we're excited about school starting. Boy, let's see what happens there. Um, see if we, if parks will calm down a little bit. Um, I know you keep track of calls for services. We've had some activity in Wayne Park. We're giving it some special attention. But I also think it attracts a lot of people, too. So, um, anytime you attract a lot of people and you've got a pool and you've got kids, summer in front, you have my solic- solicit some calls for service, but we got everything handled and, uh, we're giving up the attention that deserves and needs. Um, outside of that, please report, really, we don't see many accents, really, on, within the city limits from the last one's statistics, because I know it's kind of a hot button sometimes. So, um, right now, I think all is fair and we're doing what we can to serve the communities. Anybody have any questions? The bid is coming up. Um, I don't know who's gonna bid where, um, but that's gonna be next month, the bid will have answers.
Are you gonna try to come back with us?
Excuse me, Dave?
Are you gonna try to come back with us?
That's always, that's a possibility.
You're not committed.
I'm not committed right now, but, uh, I've enjoyed my tenure.
We all can come back.
For the board, and I appreciate that. I do enjoy, um, working with the board and that. And Stephanie's been great and getting to know people. Um, so, but yeah, we'll let you know how the bid shakes out.
All right, thank you.
Be best, thanks.
All right, public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to make any public comments? Nothing tonight, Dominic?
It's my last meeting. I'm outta here.
Back to the floor?
Back at work on Sunday, so.
Okay.
You'll have like eight months of no meeting.
Oh my God. Long as Chris has rights.
We get all take turns coming up and auditing our files here.
Maybe you can zoom, zoom in on.
You can watch them.
Watch it on, dude.
Yeah, there you go. All right. Um, claims for payment. Oh, okay. Here, I gotta pull it up, can you see that?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, I move to approve claims of payment in, uh, hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-two cents.
Sorry.
A discussion? Call for a vote, please. Motion carry, four to zero. Consideration of budget and expense report.
I move to approve the treasurer's report and budget and expense reports.
Sorry.
A discussion? Call for a vote, please. Motion carry, four to zero. Consideration of resolution twenty-five fourteen.
I move to approve, uh, resolution twenty-five fourteen.
Sorry.
So that's the one where you need to decide what you want to renew, um, for your alarm. So, um, we have the option to renew for three years. But the longest notice being a hundred and eighty-day notice. Um, and that gives us a five percent discount. If we have any intentions to, um, solicit bids for insurance in the future, we would probably want to change our length of commitment and then also maybe even the notice. But with each, um, shorter term or whenever you lose part of your discount, so.
We're happy with that, right?
We, we don't, they've been good with any claims that we've submitted. And, uh, they, every year, they thoroughly go through all of our equipment to make sure that like if we traded off any equipment or whatever, we talk about that. We talk about, um, replacement values that we have set. So I, I feel like they do a good job.
So if the movement and second are okay, pick which one option you want. And as long as you agree on the initiative, that'll be in the motion you've already moved.
Give them the discount and that we've been happy with them and our rate would stay the same for the duration, right? We commit to.
Yeah, for the four-year. Well, for the one-year.
For the one-year.
Yeah.
Kind of dumb up, too.
It's, it's for one.
The rate's for one year, but the commitment is for three. And the five percent discount is for three years.
Well, it's just, it's just saying for this year, you get a five percent discount.
Three years discount, right? You're not the last to do that.
We've all, as, and during my time here, we've always chosen the three-year commitment and so we've always gotten the five percent discount.
For the whole time.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm good with the three-year being my motion. Dave, if you're good, let's, like, keep it here on the second.
Sorry.
Good.
So, so the motion was for the three-year commitment.
Three years and you want the hundred and eighty-day notice? Of the full five percent discount?
Five percent discount, yes. I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Second, that part.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, call for a vote, please. Motion carry, four to zero. All right, consideration of second reading ordinance twenty-five thirteen.
I move to approve second reading of ordinance twenty-five thirteen.
令 ordinance twenty-five thirteen and ordinance of the city of Waverly, Nebraska, pending Chapter one-ten of the Waverly Municipal Code relating to business licensing franchises, CATV, amen to the city.
Discussion. Okay, call for a vote, please. Motion carry, four to zero. Okay. Down, consideration of my appointment of Robin Hoffman as the next fire chief.
Uh, I move to approve the appointment of Robin Hoffman as fire chief.
Sorry.
Robin, just say a few words.
If I'm approved as the next fire chief of the city, I'll work at it at a hundred and ten percent and try to do my best and, and, uh.
Hundred percent is good enough, bro.
It's a big commitment and the, the thing we need to keep in mind, we need to do what's best for the citizens of Waverly. So, uh, I'm happy to serve at the mayor's pleasure.
The thing I will mention is that, uh, this was a panel interview. Um, there was a wonderful group of, um, members that interviewed for this position. And there was a group discussion and Robin was the one, um, chosen to be the next, the leader and I think, um, all of us fully support and hope that every member, um, can also support that decision because that is what, um, this, um, community needs is a team that supports the chief regardless, so. All right, call for a vote, please.
Motion carry, four to zero. All right, consideration of agreement with JEO for programming of preliminary design services for the Waverly Fire Station project in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars.
I move to approve the agreement with JEO Architecture.
Sorry. Stephanie, does, uh, I know that Dick said he wants to bid the license and you've got it set up, you know? Is he well aware that as soon as we get this done, that twenty-four thousand would be a lot?
Yes. I sent him in, you know?
I mean, I saw you poke that in your nose or whatever.
Yep, he's the one.
That might get him to move faster because he likes to save money and all that.
Oh, let's hope so. Okay. Call for a vote, please. Motion carry, four to zero. All right, let's start into committee reports. Allison.
Hold on, let me hold the minute, sorry.
Just messing with her, just trying.
Okay, hold on, I'm sorry. Oh, and I won't call and I keep getting called. I apologize for that. I'm just like, oh, man. Um, who it's, who's the name of the person that sends them on? Erica, thank you, but it starts with an A, right?
Yes.
I'm on the hot seat right now.
Yeah, Beta could probably deal with that.
You know what? Elect Beta will be the new campaign, okay?
She has to be.
She thinks she is, so I think we're okay there. Um, okay, so, as this loads, um, we did have a meeting on Monday, last Monday. And, uh, there were people there.
Um, we did have a fine dog run. We tried to have a dog run, this dog run, then.
We did. We had, um, I think we ended up with twenty-nine people that signed up prior to the run. And then, uh, we ended up canceling it, unfortunately. I will, while you're doing that, I will also, I will also. It's loading, I'm sorry. I will also mention that, um, Clayton and Scott did a wonderful job getting field one ready for the Legion State District.
The state championship team.
State championship game last Saturday.
There was two divisions. One was in McCook and one's left in Norris and Waverly.
Okay, they got fourteen hours' notice. Um, they thought the season was wrapped up, um, several weeks ago, so they found out, um, late Wednesday night that there was a game being played Saturday here. Um, so they did a wonderful job getting the field ready to go.
And we lost.
They did.
Who must not do the good.
So anyways, our hearts and hearts of our facility did a wonderful job getting it ready. Um, so many kudos to that school. Um, and then on Saturday also was the tailgate for the boys' flag football, or I guess flag football does not include boys. Um, and it appeared to be a really good turnout.
It was very busy.
It was very busy. I did, yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, there was a lot of parents and kids there and they grilled burgers and gave everybody free shorts and a little baggie of goodies, so. It was, it was really good turnout. Um, so, flag football registration has ended. There's a hundred and sixty-five kids that are registered, so that was a really good turnout. Um, soccer registration has also ended and there was a hundred and eighty-four participants registered for that. Um, there was not enough registrations to run an adult coed softball league, so it doesn't sound like we're gonna be doing that. Um, but they're hoping to do a volleyball and three-on-three basketball, um, sometime in the fall, so keep an eye out for that. And then, they had been doing some work on some limbs and then, of course, Saturday happened and there's been a lot more work on the limbs around town, so. That's probably what it was, isn't it?
Um, one thing I do wanna, um, you and I spoke about this the other day, but I did get confirmation that the end of, well, the Aquatic Center has officially ended for the regular hours.
Yes.
For the next two weekends, um, it will be open, weekend hours, even though the kids are going back to school. Um, and then the final, there'll be one final, um, awesome event, um, raising funds for the dog park. Um, they will be doing, or Clayton will be doing a Paws and Splash Bash, um, where you can bring your dogs and have them swim in the aquatic center. So that'll be really fun. So more information to come here this week, I believe.
They'll be the last ones in the pool.
They'll be the last ones in the pool, then we'll get straight. So, it'll be fun. I mean, if you want to, that's cool, but nobody else is going to. All right, awesome, thank you. Um, public works, Aaron?
Uh, well, they've been working with a lot of down branches, um, doing tree cleanup and branch cleanup, hauling from both the north and south parts of town. And that continues to go on. And in addition, out there at the tree dump, they're feeding to plow and trying to move the, the tree branches around because they just keep on coming. So, that's really consumed them this week. Uh, they're working on new signs, street sign installs for over in Waverly Ridge Division. They submitted the second quarter discharge and monitoring reports to the state and to the EPA. Uh, they ran some wastewater lab samples as well. Um, the repairs to the wastewater treatment plant generator transfer switch were completed. Uh, they worked on the plow for the, the trucks, both the F-two-fifty and the F-three-fifty plows. They moved signs to new streetlight poles, so, um, poles along Camberley Road and a hundred and forty-eighth. Um, they moved, uh, the signs to those poles, so should start seeing that over there now. And they changed the oil on the oxidation ditch pumps. A new computer was installed at the wastewater treatment plant in the hall to scrap metal, so. We've been up here.
Awesome. Let's go to public health, David.
I don't have any dirt for you.
Okay, this one I can move forward now.
Do I have an angry board?
No. Uh, we, our economic development group met yesterday. Um, and so, um, we just continue to work through the steps in, um, becoming a, a sort of a corporation, um, by the state, so we've got some things to, a couple pieces of paper to get finished on that. So, yeah, that's about it right now.
Yes.
We did have our joint public meeting, um, on September, July, September. July twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Lot of groups to work on strategic planning and align on what we're doing. So that, um, was probably.
Yeah, so that was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was there, yeah, that's right.
City Council, Planning Commission, the Economic Development Group.
CRA.
And the CRA, we're all there at one point, at one time. Um, so it was just a good introduction so everybody could see, everybody, um, have learned what the focus of each.
A lot of thirty-something there.
What the focus of each of those groups was, so.
Okay, do you want to say yours?
Um. City administrator report?
Um, we just continue, uh, next week, we'll get our certified evaluation from, um, the county. And at that point in time, then we will make the final determination of where we want to set our letting of the budget, um, for next year. So, um, that's probably the biggest thing that's on our plate right now. Just, um, waiting to hear that.
And Stephanie, we got a graduate, she's on vacation today. She's here.
Thanks. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, I know.
All right, let's go, uh, back up to qualifications and presentations. Um, we'll do recognition. Um, I, there's several different, um, recognition. I want to start off first. Someone is coming, but this is, you know, a, a rough night. Um, Caleb, you know, you rushed here, um, from something, um, someone else wanted to be here and I think she'll be here. Um, but if she can't make it, um, I do have something that I want to read to you guys. Um, dear EMS team, we are writing this letter with immense gratitude and appreciation for the outstanding care and professionalism your team demonstrated during one of the most important and unexpected moments of our lives, delivery of our baby. Your team responded swiftly and compassionately when Rachel went into labor unexpectedly. What was obviously a chaotic and frightening experience was made less chaotic and frightening thanks to your expertise, reassurance, and remarkable teamwork. Your quick, your quick response not only ensured the safe arrival of Bailey, but also provided incredible emotional support during those intense moments. We cannot fully express how comforting it was to have the team there before, during, and after while on the way to the hospital. We don't think anyone present will ever forget that day. And for that, we appreciate you being a part of our lives forever. We have a heck of a story to share with Bailey when she gets older. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the critical work you do every day and especially for being there for us when we needed you the most. With sincere appreciation, the Ross family. So, with that, um, I will start. Your shirt right behind you. My, here we go. My words. So, um, Jason, do you want to introduce your shirt? All right.
Do you want to wear the flag?
Yes, I do want to wear the flag. I moved everything on the way.
Sorry. One more, one more thing to do.
Just gotta pick this up.
Caleb, you are up first. So, this certificate is proudly awarded to Caleb Bishop. In recognition of your outstanding professionalism, composure, and dedication during emergency delivery of a baby on July eleventh, twenty-twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, your swift actions and compassionate care play a vital role in bringing new life safely into the world. As mayor of Waverly, I am proud to honor your service and thank you for exemplifying the very best of what it means to be an emergency responder. Your commitment to our community does not go unnoticed and we are grateful for your courage and expertise. With sincere appreciation.
Thank you.
All right, good job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Tell. Tell Haines. Shall we read it to you, too?
Just answer it.
All right, Robin Hoffman. Don't even get to see it. All right. John Adams. Johnny read it to you.
No, you're right.
And then Jared has some awards that he wants to present you guys with as well.
All right, so, there are a few awards that you can get through the Department of Health and Human Services. The Stork Award is one of them and basically you have to be part of the EMS team that is there for active delivery that is not in a hospital setting. So, um, we put it for those awards, so the first one's gonna be Caleb Bishop.
Good job.
You also get a pen that you get to wear, too, so.
All right.
Tell Haines?
Good job.
Robin Hoffman? Last, but not least, John Adams. And these awards don't go out very often. In my twenty, almost twenty years, I think, we've had three, um, births that have happened outside in the hospital, so you think of the thousands of calls that we have, so. Yeah, great job, guys. Nobody leave.
Sean, right, right now. Sorry, Coen Ice was there, too. Any kids want a, maybe you want a Coen Ice? So. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you all. Jason, were there?
No. Probably a good thing.
Why would they have to have dealt with, dealt with you, too?
Yep. Worked out, just like.
Who caught the baby? Oh. Well, Tell and I were talking and we are gonna have to put a, uh, award in the new fire station, right? Isn't that what we decided?
Sure. Did not drop a baby.
So was it actually in the unit? I, I don't know. So was it in the unit or in their home?
It was in her living room.
Okay.
We delivered there on the stretcher in the living room and after the baby and the placenta was, uh, delivered, we moved ready to be ambulated.
Oh, exciting.
That's awesome. It was cool to be, I was at EMS conference when these guys were doing it and I'm watching on pulse point. Nobody had left, and nobody had left, and nobody had left. So I'm like, uh-oh, that's definitely, I feel where that's going. So being able to talk to these guys after the fact and get play-by-play for each one of them and then actually have to sit in on a, uh, OB class, one of my very last classes, and how Tell told everything was exactly how they were teaching it, so.
So it somewhat reminds me, tell me if I'm wrong, so the practice of law, there's probably only one or two things where everyone's happy, right? And adoption is one of those. I suspect, given all the really kind of horrible stuff you guys have to deal with and helping people, this is probably one of those things where everyone's happy.
Right.
It's just, it's just a wonderful blessing.
Right.
It's awesome.
One of those that you practice for, you train, but you'll probably never, ever have to do. So, yeah, to be able to say that these guys did it's. So, yeah, to be able to say that these guys did it's pretty cool, so.
Robbie, you gonna say something?
By the question, you're the attorney, you should know. So usually doctors sign the birth certificate, because usually it happens in the hospital. So what happens in the in-home setting where it's done there, is the doctor still sign?
Or have them sign on the rescue? Let me research that while we sit here.
Tell.
Tell.
I see if there's a requirement for Sue's signature on the birth certificate. Probably is.
I do remember afterwards Tell was like, well, it looks pretty close to what the book showed me.
Oh my gosh.
I saw the cord went before gated the D scene and up before
That is very encouraging.
Sue, you had to cut the cord, right?
Yeah.
I did that three times.
Why? Why is that you?
Just don't drop it.
Just
Just don't drop it. Me just don't let him touch any baby for a year.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I was there when, I wouldn't want nothing to do with that.
Good thing you and I both weren't there, David.
They don't need extra patients, right?
No, I would've just been in the way.
Yeah. You're right. Actually, TJ said he was going to come to the scene, but since we were already there, he decided not to.
He kind of like a doctor, Jake. First aid class call, did you want this?
No, I did one of them.
Health and, health in high school, right?
I was a big coach and the first aid class.
You know, the most interesting thing about it was like, you'd think, like, this is a pretty high-stress call, right? No matter how it goes, but really the incredible thing is really how simplistic it is. Like the mom does all the work, like, we're just, we're just there in case like there's complications. You think it'd be the most complicated thing in the world, but it's, yeah.
Cut the cord.
Yeah. Yeah. Cut the cord before the placenta.
Don't drink.
They also trained, did you get reverse in the hospital?
They're on, they're on the train.
Good.
I also worked labor and delivery, so I have been present for a lot of deliveries.
You tell that my deputy was here, so she's good to go, or?
I did.
No.
I did. I was planning too much, we had to relay the word, like All right. Just give all the money. Can I step out and write down this phone call? Is that allowed or not?
What's that?
I won't call, can I step out and write down this phone call? I don't know, is it okay?
We're going to call the baby.
It's called you three times in ten minutes, we're probably not emergency.
You couldn't wait for the hospital, for sure, because wait here.
They have their own nine o'clock.
When a birth occurs outside of an institution, it's circumferential, be prepared and filed by one of the following, the physician or physician assistant attendants.
What?
Down here. Father, the mother, or in the absence of the father or the inability of the mother, the person in charge of the premises for the birth occurred, or any other person in attendance, after or immediately after the birth.
Literally anyone.
Well, forty guys.
Not it.
Right. All forty better sign.
Have your landlord.
Yeah, the landlord.
The woman needs to suck the prison off.
Taylor's liked it twice.
What's going on here? Oh, not for Taylor.
So you had
Well, I almost had three of them. It was close to me.
Yeah, I was signing paperwork once, didn't have to do a lot, and all that.
I signed paperwork downstairs, got upstairs. I didn't even want to do anything.
And easy.
Uh, call it.
Yeah. I didn't know about that one.
No work, I think I'd be a ten minute.
Yeah, she's pretty good on everything. Yeah, I didn't know about that one, so. Right. Yeah, I was gonna say
Mine were all over you.
And it's a news.
In news about, I didn't have any in us.
I was not in the
Bad word, it's all right, no.
No.
Okay, we're not
We have kiddos. Hello. Hello. How's it going? Sorry, we're late. We have this one starting kindergarten.
Wow.
All right.
There's the baby.
That's what
Don't take this to that news.
One month old yesterday?
Yeah.
All right, so I, I guess get out there, I got
Yeah, Rachel.
She's a little quieter.
Do you want her out? She might scream a little bit.
You guys have met her before, just
They live with Bailey.
But with Bailey
So you're now a dad of three daughters?
Yeah.
So, so am I, so I've got a great therapist, right? It only gets better. Okay, everyone smile, one, two, three. Oh, yeah, let me get out of there.
All right. One, two, three. All right.
Awesome. They can't remember
It's, it's nice to see you guys with clothes on. I just remember opening my eyes and seeing you, and I was like, oh.
Most of the time I walked in and Taylor's like, hey, what's up, Taylor? I'm like, uh, hi, Taylor.
Oh, man. Everything's been good, yes.
So you got four new doctors now.
No. Yeah, you guys are wonderful, so thank you so much for being there so quickly. Now, which one of you is, um, Lacy Jacobson's? Okay, that's, I thought I was, I think it was you sitting next to us and Angela, right?
Oh, yeah.
I remember my job all the way to the hospital very well.
I remember your job very well. Well, yeah, no, this, you guys were wonderful, and I appreciate your respecting all of my wishes and, um, being patient. All the things.
Worked out perfect.
It did. It was a really fast hour. Little did we know.
Everybody's saying you did all the work.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you did all, when you got out of the tub and Make sure not to drop the baby.
I'm just trying to keep rhythm, so.
And if we didn't tell you, congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you, I'm sure you did.
I don't think we gotta thank you properly, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we really appreciate it. I talked to Caleb, we wanted to bring you guys something, said you guys are just there on Monday, so. So
This, this is
You might find cookies on your doorstep. I just think I have a whirlwind.
Is this a reward or no?
She's pretty cute.
Yeah, she is. And her name is?
Bailey K.
Very nice.
Yeah.
And the other two?
Who are you? Tatum. Who are you?
Riley.
Riley. You have a Tatum, a Riley, and a Bailey.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And I did, Rachel, I did read your statement.
Thank you.
And I, so I, we did, um, I did an award, um, Jared, do you want to explain the, the other award that all four of them got to make?
So Department of Health and Human Services gives out what they call a stroke award. The only way you can get a stroke award is being in something like this. You have to deliver a child outside of the hospital, um, so it doesn't happen very often. I guess, said in like the twenty years that we've, I at least been on, we've had three. So, um, yours is probably, well, one before is probably a little easier, it happened right before we got there, but, yeah. It was pretty easy, so, um, yeah, so, uh, it just goes to show that, uh, gives a little award from this, from the state, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely pretty cool.
No, absolutely, well deserved too, because it was very comforting to have all of you there, because anything could have happened. Unfortunately, and thankfully it didn't, but I think I had speedy Caleb to drive us to the hospital. Had us all there safely. I really appreciate you all very much. I feel like I yelled at you. I don't really yell at you. I can't talk to you when I have a contraction.
On the inside, there was also a lot of yelling.
Taylor's like, at least it wasn't me, it's fine.
I don't know where he was at, but that was
He was right there all the time. So when you couldn't answer, he would.
I think, I think I realized that, I think he was catching on to when I was unable to.
He had his timer out for the contractions there. Get too close.
Do you guys still do Lamaze?
Um, probably, I don't know, I did, I did that online. So going into this, I did not want an epidural this time, because I
Blew out work.
I probably said these things like out loud that made this happen, because I had, I wish I could give birth in my in-laws bathtub, because it's a big bathtub. I was joking. That wasn't something, I, I did want to do it without epidural because I just needed it, with them it just made things weird. So I got that wish, but I, going into the hospital, had, I made it there, um, I didn't want that. So I had done like a breathing technique, online course, that I finished two chapters out of the eleven. Before she was born, because she came due exactly, but, um, it So that did help me a lot to breathe through it, and I giggled to myself many times in that tub, because he was like, yeah, she's not dilated yet. Yes, I am.
I looked, I didn't see you.
So a lot you gotta do to check for that. So that part we need to do, but yes. Um, there's probably actual Lamaze classes, but I just did the online.
Well, he's supposed to be the coach, you know?
Well, and that's when I realized, I was like, oh, man, could Tell, that I, yeah, I was like, only you're able to be in this bathroom, because we don't have a big bathroom. So I was like, I probably gotta get out of this tub if my husband wants to, you know, be able to see the birth of this child. So I was like, okay, here we go. And they were so wonderful, they're like, who wrote for her? Y'all are learning. That's not a big deal. But you gotta grow up, then you ruin the That went into the trash. It, it was, I couldn't have asked for a better at-home birth than I would have not have, like, that was not supposed to happen. Epidural part, that was fine, being at home with one-hour contractions that hit like crazy, or a minute apart, and with these guys, yeah, that was a plan.
And they all vacated when you wanted them all out?
I apologize to my mom's soul. I couldn't openly yell at her to see the birth. Yeah.
Everybody understands.
Yeah.
So. It's the moment.
Yeah, it was a, it was, you guys are wonderful. Thank you very much.
Can you give your award? Thank you, guys. Rachel, Taylor, I'm so happy you guys made it. No, it's okay, I'm so glad you guys were
Appreciate you inviting us.
Of course. Tatum, Riley, what do you think of your new baby sister? She's pretty awesome.
We're very good helpers.
I was not expecting that.
Well, I closed my eyes the entire time, and so you were right there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much. I'm ready, I hope you're fine.
Birth tonight. See you later.
I'm, I'm, I moved to, uh, in our executive session to check public interest to receive legal advice and to discuss negotiations, strategy relating to possible real estate
Second.
Like lawyers left, so I'm not getting
All right, we're going to Six forty, six forty-six.
Go, vote on it.
You got my vote, her vote?
Yep, that'll be good.